Line now too, so.
It is now, okay. So it's been awhile. So I'll do a little re-grounding of what this work was about, how we got here, and then what the second phase of the program looks like. At any point, feel free to throw out any questions. The way we're really working to design this program is now it's gonna be less me and more you. Okay, so it really is based on conversation. Hopefully you had the opportunity to look at the readings. They were fairly light. Killer B's a little heavier, and I'll give you a few minutes to kind of review each one. I anticipate tonight, we'll get through it in an hour, so I won't drag it out. I don't believe in excessively long board meetings. Actually, Matt Cook and myself tried for a number of years to put a policy in place that kind of restricted the time. And we got there less formally, but because we know how efficient we aren't after four or five hours. Guess I'm sitting right here, I don't need it, but I love clicker. Nothing like a good clicker. I'm gonna skip through some of these because we have met, and I think you know a little bit about me and my previous practice. And some of it, I think we're in a, hopefully a little, you know, a formal arrangement, but we can fill in formal enough again to speak freely. Again, as a quick re-grounding, per House Bill 181355, CDE was put in line to offer board training specifically to boards that had lower-performing schools or schools on accountability clock. As was mentioned earlier, you're still in the status of having four, three priority improvement, and one turnaround school. But your district applied for this grant last year that was part of this statute, and it was awarded. It comes with some dollars, so if you remember, you have about $10,000. My understanding is it hasn't been spent. Since I'm here, you don't need to spend it on a facilitator. We'll probably have one more session, and then I'll work to give you just offline sort of supports. Earlier today, I met with Andrea and Angela. We talked about the Board Handbook, so they're already making progress there. So we don't have to have this formal arrangement once we kind of get through it. So you have a lot of flexibility with those monies if you need somebody to help create some of that stuff. Long as we can show it's linked back to turnaround work, it's totally appropriate. I think a Board Handbook, you spoke about that, all of you spoke about that last time, and the value of having something like that. And it makes perfect sense if you want continuity in governance. That is an easy tool, not necessarily easy. It's pretty easy, it's just a little bit time-consuming, right? But you can put in place to help future board members come on. It's a great legacy when we leave our boards, having something like that present for the next set. So that's some good work. So I wanna start again, committing all of you for being willing to engage in this and just talk about governance. Again, it's not, you all have something to share, you have your own unique perspective, you know as much as I do, just from a different orientation. And we have to remember that our own development, our own effectiveness as a board rests with the discipline of the board itself. Only you can make yourself better, nobody outside can ever do anything. So we covered the first phase of the training, it was high-level on policy governance. Again, as an introduction to sort of best practices of governance, not to say you should be policy governance, not at all. But I think when you look at those principles, if you remember some of those principles, they're really based on what was observed in high-performing boards. And that's why we sort of decided to call those out. But so the first phase was looking at those and also identifying some areas of challenge within your district or within your board, I should say. And the second phase is we're gonna keep those principles in mind. And again, the principles that you've chose for your own board, and however you may actually effectuate those in practice. We're gonna keep those in mind, but we're gonna start thinking about the actual turnaround efforts and the role of the board in those efforts. Turnaround's just one domain, and it doesn't matter if it's turnaround or budget or making decisions about housing. It still comes back to, you know, how do we make these decisions when we look at governance, right? When we're thinking from a governance lens? And quite honestly, as I sat there, I was impressed. I saw that governance lens, and I know a lot of you are new members, and sometimes you don't see that for a long period of time. So that's what we're gonna be focused on, though, is turnaround specifically. And that turnaround should probably be linked back to, again, some of the stuff we heard earlier tonight. We're talking about academic outcomes and what's important to us as board members. I'm gonna throw up this slide. If you remember, it's changed a little bit from what I had previously. But as board members, we have a different levels of responsibility and accountability. We have our moral responsibility. As elected representatives, we're responsible to serve the needs of our owners. So the challenge is always to think about how we link back to our community being the owners, however you as a board have defined the owners. So we wanna make sure we're serving their needs, which could be academic. You know, when I started on my school board in 2011 in Aurora, the one thing I heard consistently was low academic performance. This is a problem, this is a problem. And it wasn't just me, it was my colleagues. And then we did surveys, and we did, this was an issue. This is how we connected. Our moral responsibility was to address that concern and focus on that. Similarly, it's also related to educational accountability. We have legal obligations within our state and within our communities. There's very few communities, there's none I've been in that said some minimal level of performance academically wasn't important. I've never heard that. I've been in lots of board meetings where they never brought it up, which is a concern of mine. If you don't talk about what your mission is, what your district exists for, it's probably a problem, right? But it's key to what we do. So in my case, both of those were one in the same. But we do have those legal requirements. You are expected to achieve a certain level on those state assessments our kids are across the state, and this isn't just CDE. I mean, this, you know, that technical mess that you saw up there, I can call it that. I work with a lot, it's a mess. It does have a logic, it just takes awhile to get through it. But it's based on statute that was really bipartisan in nature. Again, with that same shared understanding that we want all of our kids to have basic levels of numeracy and literacy. So this is why we're here ultimately, this is why CD sets here, this is why you're in your role. And I think it's always important to re-ground ourselves to that, too. And to say, okay, what are we debating? What are we talking about? And I did it, I heard it a few times, like, is this our lane? Or how does this affect other outcomes? I mean, it's one thing, we want our teachers to be served well, but more importantly, possibly, is we want our ownership to be served well, right? There's a difference, that doesn't mean teachers don't count. I think I brought that up, usually I bring that up in earlier sessions, right? I don't sit on a board seat to serve a special interest group, charters or unions. Or again, I'm not taking a position on any of these groups right now. I'm saying, my role is to serve our community, right? And what are those outcomes we have collectively decided on is important. So again, just a little refresher, a little background. Again, if you have any questions or comments, throw them out there. This is beautiful, because I don't have to talk about this, really. This is what was shared earlier. Right now, you only have four schools on accountability clock. There's always a little variation, you get smaller numbers, you know stats, I can tell. You're gonna see a little bounce in and out, right? But you definitely wanna keep pushing, you want all those schools out. Again, I heard that, I heard that in the comments here, you want no schools on accountability clock. It makes sense, we want all of our kids served well. The thing to think about when we're thinking about these sorts of outcomes or ends is these are minimum performance expectations. Minimum, right? They're not aspirational. And I did hear in your conversation about the valuation that some of the stuff in there is about strategic planning. Some of that might be a little more aspirational, you know, which makes sense, right? But for something like this, we would want all of our kids, again, to at least hit these minimum standards, these standards defined by our assessments or otherwise. And even your schools, you'll see, we haven't actually posted the hard copies yet publicly because they're still preliminary, some districts are appealing certain things, there's a process for that. But even in those schools right here in this district that are performance, you're gonna find those different groups and even overall, maybe an achievement or growth, you're gonna find percentiles of like 10, okay? And their performance. And I always feel compelled to bring this up, so do my colleagues. It's not that performance is an end game. So you wanna think about that when you're identifying your ends. You've got your mission, maybe you have your vision, but you need to make it concrete, too. And that comes back to the valuation, because ultimately, your strategic plan or academic outcomes would be the basis for an evaluation of your executive, right? And it sounds like you're all moving that way, which again, is exciting. Like right now, if I was to ask, and this is something I asked when I was here, again, in April. The first one we did online, right? Yeah, that was virtual, and then, yeah, I got stuck on the road somewhere in the snow. But one of the things I asked, we started by talking about ends that we come up with or we define through our interactions with our communities. And what I'm curious right now, can you still articulate kind of your shared expectations? Do you have something universal? Or would you all at least come to the same sort of outcome? Any thoughts?
I would say get all the schools off the accountability clock.
So that's kind of a shared, a shared end, right? And I did, like I said, I heard that earlier, so that's a good thing, right? Okay, anything else?
I think when they presented a few weeks ago, we were, you know, obviously wanting to get these off the accountability clock, but also the ones that are on improvement. We wanna, we wanna keep making sure we're moving everybody forward to performance. So not just only getting them to improvement and keeping the ones improvement. And obviously, we don't want any of those to then, you know, take a step down. So, but I think we're all on that same page as, that we're seeing that growth and that movement of all the schools and all the levels until we're at performance for all of them, is our aspirational goal right now, so.
Right, so it's a single shared outcome. And do you believe that outcome is linked to what your community has told you is being a priority?
Yeah.
Or its highest priority for this school district? Yeah?
Yeah, I would say the other highest priority is successfully completing Grand Junction High School.
Yes.
Sorry?
Grand Junction High School.
The building of the high school.
Building the school, right.
With a very large budget, so.
So right.
Yeah, I think our community, and anybody throw in, they wanna see, they wanna see really good academic outcomes for all of our students. You know, both for, and for our students with disabilities and special needs. And then I think seeing that we're doing well with the building of the high school, and then I think safety of our students, I would say is probably the three themes that we at least here for right now. And we know that will change, obviously, once the high school's done, and that's good. But we're, and I think we're making good steps and strides in all those directions.
I think kinda on a more personal level, it's just more with us. A lot of people would listen to a board meeting, and then the first thing they would say is, you guys don't like each other, you guys don't trust each other. And I think we're starting to communicate more with each other and starting to really understand and talk to each other more. So I think it's more of a, you know, a good thing for us, why is it just so on a personal level? Because they see that communication, that we've opened up, and we've kinda, you know, listened to each other, so.
Yeah, yeah. That can be one of the biggest barriers to making progress towards any of those outcomes is that tension that exists in the boardroom. And every one of us, at some point, if you stay on the board, you're gonna have that experience. I mean, I had that experience with, every two years, you have a new board. I mean, one member is, it's a new board, right? So I mean, that's a big celebration for this board. But that's, that's great to hear. So have you codified those other outcomes? I mean, even the governance, that would be your internal one, but sort of, these are priority areas that we're focusing on this year, I'm curious? I mean, you're like academic outcomes and the building of the high school. Is it less formal, maybe? No judgment here, I'm just asking.
I would say, I would say that anything that links, you know, so I would say even both of those things, the academic performance and the high school, I think both are linked through our purview of maintaining a viable budget. And I think that all of those things are directly reflected in the strategic plan. So I would say that they're loosely, they're loosely in the strategic plan, but no, we have not, like, this is our goal as a board, and we're gonna do it.
Right. I mean, it's a big step just to have that commonality to where you've identified them. If it's loosely connected, eh, I'd say, I mean, that's a good thing. What I would always just point out in terms of the governance is we remember everything goes back to ownership. And this is where we're gonna differ from operations and what they do. So we've identified a few of these things. The strategic plan might be kind of written in stone annually with certain outcomes, oftentimes operational, which we really don't need to concern ourselves typically with that much. He would need to concern himself with it, and if his staff are meeting those goals that have been identified in that sense, there's different, it plays out differently, of course, in different ways. But I think the reminder I would throw out is we always wanna look back at our ownership linkage process. So you've identified these, which is perfect, because now you have something in common. You can pull your board meetings back to it. You can also direct the superintendent, it's like, hey, these are the most critical updates we need, you know? You hadn't heard this, you said since you've been here, because the accountability piece, right? Now, I don't know, does that mean you haven't heard about assessment data? Have you had annual updates? I mean, that might be what you'd wanna think about as a board again, too. What are the data points that are oriented towards my community sort of input or community-giving outcomes? And then make that a part of a monitoring process, too. Again, that's not on their staff, it's on the operation side. It's on you, like, here are the goals, now here's the information. We need to monitor our progress towards getting these schools off the accountability sort of watch situation. So that always goes back to this linkage. We always wanna remember our role as board members, temporary in nature, you know? Servant leaders is what we are. It may be hard to believe if you're in year one, but year eight will be there like soon, if you have term limits here. Did you, I don't remember, do you have term limits? Yeah, two, so, yeah, it'll be here, won't it? It's like, it's weird how it like happens. But, but your time is temporary, and that time is to represent the ownership. And then that's related to all these subsequent principles. Don't worry, I went through these, I'm not going through them all again, I'm just gonna zip through. The only thing I really wanna mention is the ownership leads us to identify our goals, right? And that's what you've done, which is excellent. And then by knowing what those goals are, then ultimately, it leads to the monitoring of those goals. There's different ways we could do that, including the superintendent evaluation. So that might be something, and it sounded like you were thinking about that, too, because you've already kind of thought about how the strategic plan, what's realistic. But that would be a monitoring process or other policies that might be related to those ends. And however you define it, doesn't have to be policy governance. My favorite slide, do you remember this slide? This is my neuron slide. My background, I studied neurobiology, like, through master's degree in psychology. And so I like neuron stuff, but that's kind of what that looks like. But it explains the system in one picture, which I really like. So we start with owner input. We define our policies or our work through that input, and then that leads to the subsequent phases. Ultimately, though, the day-to-day decisions, again, are tasked with our single sole employee, right? Doesn't end there, though, because then we're monitoring, and then we come back to owner input. So you'd wanna think again about how are you engaging the community every year, right? Not once, you know what it is right now, but what's it gonna be next year? That, I don't know what the timeline is for your high school, but it will be built, as you said, and something else will be present in the community member's mind.
Is, can I ask a question really quick?
Please, please.
Would we ever be, so when we're monitoring our goals, so we just said, common goals of GHS and academic improvement, would there be, would we be monitoring anything that we aren't evaluating our superintendent for? Everything that we are, every goal that we have would be, we wouldn't be evaluating two things separately, right? It would all be wrapped up?
It depends how you set up your monitoring process. And it depends on what you're monitoring specifically. So if you are monitoring policy, I mean, that would, there's a whole range of policies you might be monitoring and asking for feedback that you're in compliance, if you're in compliance from the superintendent, right? Those could all potentially be incorporated within an evaluation. There's different ways you can do it. If you do that, it could get pretty lengthy. So again, if you're kind of a traditional policy governance board, you would have all your executive limitations, you know, so there was no financial problems in expenditures or whatever, whatever it might be, right? Those are actually in policy. Maybe quarterly, you'd be asking for a report out on compliance with that policy. So at the end of the year, like Pooter's a policy governance board, they could take all of those reports, those monitoring reports, and say, okay, where did we meet? Where did our superintendent meet or not meet across all those? And I've also seen districts that aren't totally policy governance, because there's a whole range in kind of how districts choose to do this. They may have a few kind of superordinate goals that they'll have out there, like what you're talking about, like the high school build and these outcomes, and you have a timeline. They may just rate or evaluate the superintendent based on those. The important thing is you let the superintendent know in advance what they're gonna be evaluated on, of course, because so many boards don't. I mean, when I started on my board, and I loved my colleagues at the time, my first board, and, but the process was terrible. What it was, was superintendent, tell me what you've done this past year, basically. So I sat on the board, and I get a list of 100 things, 100 initiatives in a district the size of Aurora, you know, comparable to this, a lot more students, but comparable number of schools and stuff. And that, how do I evaluate the superintendent on that? And then you know what it goes to, right? Well, I really like the superintendent, and we had that one scenario where we talked about something like this, right? Where then it's kind of a personality contest. Brian's a swell guy, all the teachers love him, but the principals hate him, so we can't. And the administration, you know, and then it just evolves. And that's why if you can clearly identify, it doesn't mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, if he treats staff inappropriately and is rude and hostile, and those might be some of the limitations, I mean, you're not gonna tolerate that, right? We want a professional working environment. But when it comes down to the actual evaluation, we have a couple measures, and we're just gonna say, did you hit it or not? And you may have another couple measures based on things that are like this year only. You know, so the high school could be prioritized, like, you know, meeting whatever objective, you know? You've got the land, you've got the ultimate initial steps, whatever, the build, however you wanna do it. But again, it's up to you. I think the important thing is you have a clear consensus and you have a clear way to measure it. Because I do feel like, just again, sitting here, I think Will, it was a good point, your culture has shifted since I was here. I mean, I could see it just as somebody sitting in the, and as I spoke with you and how willing you are to engage in different topics, there's a difference, right? But sure enough, as it's good now, it could shift in two years, I mean, in four years. So if you can identify or make the process clear, then it can reduce some of that friction, because then people know that you're not trying to get the best of them, or you're not arguing based on your, how great a friends you are with this employee or that, or, you know, you've known Brian longer, so I can't trust you, or that weird stuff. It doesn't mean it won't occur, right? It's people and process. We can't always control the people. We try to build good relationships, but the process we can put in place to try to improve things. So what I have appears a couple of just kind of questions for you. And I threw on the bottom, if you remember, so this was way back, this was like, when did we do the first session? January? January, and then when I came back to, I also took a variety of notes. These were the, on the bottom there, these were the challenges that you all identified. So these were the larger clusters, if you remember, I pulled together all the stickies. You had talked about maybe some things you could do. There were a few of them, I think you were still like, I don't know. I mean, the teamwork one, I think, was still there, and that's a hard one to, that's the hardest one, right? When you're talking again about relationships, that can be the hardest one to conquer, but.
We just have to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't have a relationship until you build it. And so as we've been working together on projects and just getting to know one another, I mean, that made a huge difference. None of us knew one another. I mean, we had, because we had been on the campaign trek, you know, together.
Right.
For the most part, so it definitely, and I think it's probably really interesting coming from Doug's perspective, because he's spent the most time here. I mean, he's on his last year. And so spending seven years at this point, you come from a very different perspective. And to have a brand-new board come on, I mean, Carrie had just come on, as we were discussing earlier, she hadn't been here, but what, less than 60 days, I think, by the time, before the election. And so having that many new people on the board, it just, I just think it was going to take time regardless of. And I do think everybody was willing.
Right.
Just had to prove it.
So the first one, so do you think your governance has changed? I think I've already kind of heard the answer to this. I mean, Will, you mentioned in what you said, I mean, at least in terms of some of the culture and trust. I think that, it seems like that may have improved. Have other things changed, would you say, since April?
I don't know if our approach to governance has changed, but I think we have delineated the difference between governance and administration.
Right.
Delineated our roles, and we've had a massive change in leadership.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we've, I mean, I think we've had, yeah, massive changes.
Right.
But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we had a defined approach to governance. I don't know that we still do, I don't know that I know what that would mean or look like. But I don't, I guess it's changed just because leadership has changed, and so, I don't know. I don't know that our approach to governance has changed.
Right.
I don't know that we had a clearly defined one.
Right.
I feel like we're.
And even if you don't have a defined one, you still have one.
I would agree. I think, I mean, I feel like we're a little bit more organized, like we revamped our work sessions. You know, and we're, we kind of worked on our agenda for our business meetings. Just, I think, for the board to be able to get as much done as possible, which again, that communication with the board, I think, helps create teamwork and trust, because we have more time to talk. And so I think that that's helpful, and that's what our community wants. And so, yeah, I wouldn't say, and I think we're, we have a, yeah, kind of better idea of roles and whatnot. But I think also, knowing that we were all kind of on this precipice of a leadership change, you know, we were, I think there was a lot of anticipation of trying to kind of have one superintendent wrap up and wish them well, and then have new ones start and get going. And so I think that's also kind of helped bring some things to a certain amount of calm, because we knew there was going to be a big change. And so now I feel like we're getting into running and rolling with all of that, so. That's my feeling.
I think that was well said. I think Brian, you know, I get asked, you mentioned word calm, and I've had, actually even today, a gentleman came up to me, says, seems like the board's kind of evened out, or whatever, it's my word, but, you know? And I've, in part, given Brian a lot of Dr. Hill. It's after, not nine o'clock yet, it's Dr. Hill.
It's Dr. Hill until nine?
No, Doug, these rules that you make up, you know about those.
Listen, he made that up, he made that up a long time ago. So anyway, so it slips once in awhile. But anyway, he's done a really good job, I believe, over the last number of months of really, in private conversations and group conversations, just subtly, the focus has been on how do we help our kids to do better in our system? I suppose these tangent things that could get you off track as a board or as a district. And it's been, I think with the presentations like we've had tonight, we've had through, you know, different presentations that everything is focused on our job, the district's job, to provide an environment for our teachers and kids to be safe, for them to be, you know, to learn. So I think he really thinks he's done a very nice job of kind of guiding that, either intentionally or not. I think it's been intentional. I give him that credit. No, he's done a really good job with that, that I think can't be overstated, because you do. You have five of us, or like you said, anybody new comes on a board, they're coming on with different thoughts and different ideas, which is, which is great. I think we've mentioned that before, it's okay that, I actually like that we have diverted different ways of looking at things, because, but if we're all grounded in keeping the main thing the main thing, and that's student learning, then that's, I think, helped.
I think that's perfect, I think we're gonna wrap up now, I think.
I think we'll capture, we'll capture that earlier, though.
Right, no, that's right.
Helps build trust, because I believe that's what we're all here for. Now, we may have different views on how to get there sometimes, and we can have discussions, but that's that end in mind type thing. And Brian's done a good job of doing that, so. Have you tried to do that on purpose, or has that just been Caitlin, or? Honey, do this one, anyway.
That was really well said, though. And I mean, that, and that does come back, though, to, again, having that goal, that shared goal, because then that even makes, would make his job easier. If he did it intentionally or unintentionally, I mean, it worked out, I'm guessing it was intentional, too. But the more clarity you have concerning what you need and what your focus is, then you're gonna have meetings that are less about all this extra stuff. And really, they should be a lot shorter, right? But you should be dialoguing about the most important topics of all, which probably are the outcomes of your kids. You said it really well. And the governance thing I found real interesting, what you all said, because when I was back here also in April, there was a lot more concern with kind of how you were doing business. It came up in different ways, it came up in the notes, like how you run meetings. Some of you felt like you didn't have it, nothing was given to you. And I'm sure, Doug, after years on here, you've got a lot of experiences. You know what governance can look like in your district, and you've seen it in different forms, right? Well, that's what's happened again, you're creating a governance structure, you don't have a name for it. I mean, it doesn't have to be policy governance, there's like millions of coherent governance, blah, blah, they're all basically the same. You haven't, you still haven't defined it. So you're seeing even to some degree, maybe what exists. So you're, you're seeing even to some degree, maybe what existed in the past. And again, that's why it's important that the process keeps getting defined. Because then when your, your new people do come on, then they're going to be like, oh, that, this isn't something just being, it, it wasn't out of thin air. I mean, there was something here. I mean, you can attest, right?
And you know, again, to Andrea's credit, I think some of it has been, it's been intentional.
That's right.
Can we better improve communication? And you see, again, that working together and, and a lot of times that's the issues people have in, in all realms of their life is.
Exactly.
Just the communication ball dropped and, and creates other issues. And so again, that's, there's been a good, it was recognition that was a problem, created bigger problems. Problems that didn't need to be. And now that, that's getting better and will continue to get better. And, and that helps then in development of processes that you need.
Right.
Like the evaluation.
Right.
Angela are working, you know, I mean, that's an example of how do we communicate?
Right.
We're all on the same page. And that helps build like Will said, trust. We can trust each other because I know I'm going to hear about some. Good job to everybody.
Yeah. No, it's worth, yeah, it's worth recognizing where you've had success like that. It's, it's great. And, and again, you know, I'm, you know, I started this by talking, I'm a data nerd. So, you know, maybe some of you can relate to that. But I, I do think it's important, especially with the board being again, servant leaders in a temporary role to document. Okay, to have that evidence, to have that understanding of why. So you've done things Andrea, it sounds like to possibly improve communication, or you did, or that's Doug's feeling. If those things could be codified again in some way, again, it's a stopgap. So when the next group comes in, then they can understand it and not have to learn it quite as hard sometimes. Because like you said, Angela, the relationships, I mean, it just has to.
They evolve.
They evolve. You can't make, you can't make a, you know, right.
You know, I was at a foundation meeting, I don't know if Brian was there or not, but it was, he was in this room. And it was, I think I asked, it was a board member was supposed to give us a message. And I said, what, what is the message the group has for me? And these are community leaders, business leaders, governmental leaders. And I think I asked, what is, what is your expectation? You know, not just of me, but our board. And it was very clear, you know, basically get along, do, do the work, right? And, and it, it just struck me that the, the obligation is that we don't always have to agree on things, but we have, you know, I have to put my personal things maybe aside so that we get these things done that, that's better for our kids. That I'm not going to be answering to this group or this person or whatever, that that's, that's a mission. And, and everybody, I think they clap, like that's what they wanted. And, and I thought, because at, to that point, we hadn't, we weren't there. And it was very obvious in the community, we weren't there.
Right.
And, and, and we sometimes need to humble our, you know, that humility of how can we work together to better understand each other, to, to be respectful? And I, I think that, again, come about because I think we all want that. Dr. Hill has, has been a good promoter of that. He, he models that, you know, he's a very humble person. He listens really well.
He's threatening.
He does that too. He does that. Anyway, sorry, I won't ramble anymore, but.
For the recording, that was a joke. Lighten it up a little bit.
It's humor.
Is that a wink I saw too?
No, that.
You have to be forceful though too.
Yeah. So some of the challenges, are there any other thoughts on some of the challenges and maybe some actions? You know, have you addressed some of these? It sounds like trust and teamwork, you've, you've addressed, it's work in progress always. I would say, I put one up there before I got here, knowing that you had created a committee and you were interested in a board handbook. And this is something I've been kind of talking back and forth and, I mean, that's a pretty big step because it is a time investment. So I do see, I saw before I came here, it's like, hey, some of you ra, I think all of you raised this as something that might be helpful back in April. You know, and then you, my understanding is you created sort of a subcommittee, they're working on it. So I mean, that's, those are big, they seem, may not seem huge, but, but it's a big step.
You said, and we talked a little bit about this when we were discussing the board handbook. And really making sure that when people come into this, when they, they decide to serve on this board, that they understand how much time it should take. It's very difficult. It's a lot of ti, it's a major time commitment. And, you know, making sure that we continue to share that information with people. So that we continue to get a board that can do the work because they can spend the time doing it.
Right, yeah. So we were talking about sort of the clarity too, that it's helpful for new candidates coming in. Of what the expectations are and what the scope of work is.
Yes.
The board I was on, and I've seen a lot of boards, they'll have sort of a candidate forum way prior to the election, where people can come in and just ask questions of the sitting board, like what do you do? How much time is it, things like that. But even that being said, you don't ever want to discourage a candidate. And similarly, we need to, I think we need to be a little more gentle towards each other. Because sometimes the reality is we're all in very different spots and what we can commit individually can differ. But that doesn't mean it can't be an important contribution. I mean, some people will work full time, some people will be, you know, have multiple kids, some, you know, we'll all have different things. I think we can still honor that and do the work effectively. But we need to be honest too. I mean, I'm sure all of you, if you wanted to, you could do something every single day, all day. Exactly, and that was experience. And, and if you put that as an expectation for new members, that's not going to work. Similarly for yourselves, that doesn't work. It's not a, it's not a, you know, that's not what we want, right? Quality of life matters too. And, and that just can, can eat a person up, but. Anything else on the identified challenges? Has there been any work on any of those beyond that? Like community engagement, that was something I think that came up. Like how do you more effectively engage the community?
I think we're kind of working on that, just with the board coffees and the meetings and talking to people around town. And then the visits to the schools and, so I think that's, that's really coming around.
Okay.
Cause I know I've learned a lot just from going to the few schools that I've gone to and the ones that we go to. And just talking to these teachers and these kids and different parents and.
Parents.
So I, I think that's really one of the bigger things.
And then do you have a way that you bring that information back to the full board? Or also things you hear that you bring it back to the community and maybe what you do in response? So that would be the full loop.
And then like for, for us, one of the new things that we added on to, you know, the goings on in Grand Junction, the goings on with the board, or what do we call it?
Good things.
Yeah, good things, that's it. The good things. As, and that's where we take the time to talk about, or even at the board discussion, about the certain things we've done on trips and, and our, or different visits and things like that. And, you know, Andrea's really good about putting it on our, our Facebook, you know, where we went to and, you know. So I think that we've gotten better about that and putting it out there to, you know, the board members or us or.
Right, on that side, yeah. And that, that's important to have that public face with celebrations too, especially. Cause oftentimes communities don't know all the great things that are going on, so that's one way to do it.
Yeah, we've carved out time with the new board agenda to make sure that the board has an opportunity to bring back updates that we get. And then we've also been working on getting out to various community groups to be able to give an update, which the strategic plan was kind of a easy springboard to use to get out to like Lions, Rotary, you know, the GOP group, you know, just their luncheons, like getting out and just talking to different people that want to hear about what's going on. And so I've made, you know, I've let people know that I'd be happy to come and give any kind of updates on the strategic plan or just things that are happening, so we can create that full loop of like, you know, not everybody's coming to the board meetings or listening to it, but they can see that we're actually accomplishing things with the board. I'm actually really excited to hear about our third pillar of the strategic plan, which is our engaged community. And just kind of see what, what we're doing with the district to work on that community engagement piece of it. And then see how we as a board can, you know, help with that. Cause I, I think what I run into quite a bit is, it's just, it's a lot of either lack of understanding or misunderstandings that people tend to kind of take. And then, and then it's like the game of telephone, right? Then it just like, they say it to someone else and then it starts changing and then they say it again and it changes again. And so I think if, I'd like to see if we could get out in front of some of those things. So one, people don't get themselves so worked up over things that, that the district's actually not even really doing or it's not even happening. And so I think there's a certain educational piece. I would like to be able to work with our community so that they have a better understanding. We're also doing that through our leadership program that we reinstated, which is kind of like, community members can come in and get to know the ins and outs of the district. A lot of counties will do this too. Like you can do a leadership thing and learn about the jail and landfill and things like that. And so we're kind of, we've done it years past and so we brought that back as well. Cause again, the more people that can hear us or they go through that process can understand like how the district is actually operating, so. And I think Dr. Hill and a lot of his staff are doing a really good job, you know, getting that out and communicating that to the staff. And then, you know, I, I just try to work on my end of trying to make sure the community understands those different things too.
I think the communication ladies are amazing, you know, what they do, they always try and let us know, you know, let everybody know what, what we're doing and where we're going to be at or what's going on or if so, certain schools have something going on. So I think, you know, with the addition of those guys, it's, it's good.
Yeah, we've made, I think that's more robust than in getting that.
So I mean, you have, you definitely have good tools in place and it sounds like you have good, a good way to get that information out. My only caution would be always think about again, how are you getting the information about the goals? And you're doing it partly as you're seeing Andrea too, you're, you're dispelling misinformation because that's a huge problem all the time. Sometimes you can give a, once you share information, then it's like, oh, that's no longer an issue, boom, right? But if people don't know, then the smallest thing is the biggest, right? In their mind, this is what they're going to, the hill they're going to die on. So that would be the only thing I'd say maybe, and, and that's you to decide kind of where you're at. But how do you continuously refine those goals each year? How are you, what is your mechanism? It's not just sharing information, but it's, it's soliciting actively, what do my parents want? Do what, what do my kids need, what, right? And I mean, sharing the message is so big and I think you were saying it earlier too, Doug, with like a mill. I mean, if you're getting, you want to get the information out sooner, right? Not later. And you want to be having those positive contacts with the community all the time. You don't want to show up at the door just when you want money, right? Cause everyone's like, yeah, we're on to you. Because that's not true anyway, because you're, you're there because you do have great things going on in this district. And unfortunately, it's hard, that's hard to get out there sometimes.
Can I say, can I kind of like try to wrap up what I'm thinking about all of this right now? So as we're talking about goals and how to communicate our goals and like how we're, I, my brain kept short circuiting on how to evaluate ourselves on our goals. And then I realized like, actually we can evaluate ourselves. Like we could be, you know, we can evaluate our superintendent. I know, I had to avoid. I avoided saying it. But so, you know, detail how we're going to evaluate him, do that. Detail how, like what are our goals and how are we going to evaluate ourselves? And then report back out on that. But then also kind of like, you know, continuing to foster that culture of evaluation. And, you know, we have Panorama and, you know, healthy kids and, you know, all of our staff feedback. But, you know, just making sure that we're evaluating ourselves, we're evaluating our superintendent. And then, you know, the other missing link I was just thinking about kind of separate that we've heard from previous boards is asking building admin to evaluate central staff. But just kind of like anyways, that's kind of an extra step. But just all these concentric circles of evaluation, and we can just do that for ourselves. And that can help us articulate, it can help us, us articulate our goals and then articulate our goals outwards and then figure out what that even means and how we're doing that.
That might be a cool thing to, to share. I mean, if we, if we can get specific with our own goals and then share it with everybody. I mean, maybe you and I have some of the same goals and we can work on them together to achieve something quicker, better, faster, you know.
Oh, like individual instead of like board goals?
Yeah, and no, well, either way, I mean, if we, if we, if we start with some individual goals and then move those into how do, how do, how do we come together with board goals? I mean, beyond what you were talking about of, you know, first of all, we want our academic scores to, to come up and, and make sure that our students are getting a good, solid education. We want to make sure our staff is taking care of, we want to make sure schools are safe. You know, there's all, there's all of the different pieces that I think we, I, I can't imagine that we're not on the same page about. At this point, we've had enough discussion about it. But it would be very interesting to actually write it down.
Yeah.
Make it official.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can report back when we, when we have made some achievements or some strides.
Or if we're, yeah, if we're, you know, have some benchmarking and like.
Yes.
We're not where we want to be, what we need to do. We need to model the same, you know, what we expect of everybody else. We need to do the same thing, so.
Yeah.
But okay, so maybe can we, are we going to keep moving?
We're going to keep moving.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to keep moving. There are a variety of board evaluation tools too, that you just use. And I don't know if you've used anything like that.
No.
It's something, I can send you a bunch of examples and you can look through them if there's anything. Casby has one, it's probably in their new board member handbook I think. But there, there's quite a few. I can, I'll shoot them to you, it might be something you want. You know, we used, a lot of boards too, will use them once or twice a year, kind of before, beginning of the year, into the year. Do kind of a pre, post and good, good conversation. I mean, that's what a lot of it will come down to. It's like, hey, we, we're not all on the same page on this, let's talk. So now we're, we're going to just touch on this first reading really quick. It's going to kind of orient you to the next session. There's going to be a couple of case studies that we're going to dig into specific to school turnaround and what districts have done in that regard. This one's much more global, like most of the information here. It's called the Killer Bees, Moving Beyond the Killer Bees. It's about 10 years old, so it's, it's dated, but, but still it's true in most regards as I've looked through things. And the reason it was part of the Centers for School Turnaround, I think their actual curriculum, is because they wanted board members to really understand what the geography looks like. And a lot of you may already have some of this experience or you've seen it, but some, some don't. And this does also address kind of the role of boards in school turnaround efforts. Now, what are the killer bees? I'm not going to go through all these questions again, for the sake of time, we're not going to. This is something you can kind of reflect on, but if you, if you're able to read this, do you know, what are the killer bees? Do you know what that? There you go. No, jump in, you're part of the team. He was prompting you, right?
Yeah.
And buildings, budget and books, I think are the ones, right? And oftentimes, boards will focus into a level of detail that's not really appropriate for their necessary role. And I think that's more what that talks about, the danger of having boards that are so operationally focused that it disrupts the expertise you have in place. I mean, if you don't have the leadership structure in place with all the money that's being spent and the expertise that you supposedly hired, then you need to really rethink what's going on, right? What you want to be doing is monitoring. So again, you don't have to be the expert on everything because it's virtually impossible. I mean, before I was on a board, you know, I have a PhD in educational policy. I worked a decade in large urban districts, central office and stuff, and I presented a lot of boards. When I sat, not in this seat, but that seat, I didn't know anything again. But I certainly thought I may know more and I'm not saying I don't. But, but I can't know everything that's necessary, nor can Brian. Brian's got a team for a reason, right? So we have to be reasonable with each other when our expectations are. And that's really, I think, one of the points of this. Is there anything else that stood out in this article that you want to call attention to? Do you feel like you're bored? What, I do, I do want to talk about number five. Nobody has any comments, if there's any views on this. Like what's your role been related to turnaround, excuse me, turning around low performing schools? It's hard for some of you to answer because you're new.
I mean, so when we did the bus tour that the district put together at the beginning of school, and we were able, we visited Chatfield, that was a turnaround school. And we got to chat with the principal and vice principal. And I specifically asked them like, what was key in getting your school out of turnaround? And so it was, you know, cause obviously knowing that we had other schools that were kind of in that place, it was really interesting to hear like what they focused on and what they did. And so I think that's really key. And I know that we're, the district's utilizing the success we had at Chatfield to probably help go and translate over to Clifton and our other schools. So, I mean, so that was really helpful because I think just asking the people who've done it, like what they did and, and how it worked was really enlightening. Cause I, I wouldn't know. I mean, I wouldn't know from that building principal, what did you have to talk to your teachers about? What did you have to start focusing on? You know, then what did you start seeing? So I, I think that was really powerful to have an understanding of what that needs to look like for our other schools. It helps us be organized for sure. I mean, I think it helps, it's a guiding document to help push us forward in, yeah, academic success. You know, and a lot of other situations. So yeah, I think that's, I think it helps us be focused for sure.
Right. I mean, and I think it's important that you, the, the biggest thing I think that's conveyed in a number of these readings is while we can't be experts in everything as board members, we need to understand there's a degree of nuance that may not exist within our typical, more typical schools, right? So it wouldn't be unusual to spend money differently, of course, for a school that's lower performing. Or spend more money, or allocate resources differently, or do things like that. And we'll, we'll dig more again, we're not gonna do it all tonight. I gotta drive back to Glenwood Springs. I've got another training in the morning, but I'm gonna be over there. It's close, yeah. And then I've got, I don't know where I have to go, somewhere south of, an hour south, what's an hour south? It's a really small town, by Aspen, anyway.
Carbondale?
No, it's real, it's, I think, I think it's really small. I'll look it up afterwards if you're really curious.
I'm thinking, what's an hour south of?
I went smaller than.
But um.
I know, you did. You were, you were.
So, yeah, you're killing me here, I gotta look.
I know, now we're all like.
I had it right here. It is, I think it's small, Woody Creek.
You're just making.
It's about, it's about 45 minutes south of Glenwood Springs, or whatever direction, southeast or something. Anyway, so, I totally lost where I was, but at least I know it's Woody Creek.
So, I wanna, I wanna, I'm just curious about this. So allocating resources differently to other schools. I'm curious about the, to schools who are in a higher need. I'm curious about the mechanisms of that because, you know, we approve the budget for the future and we're doing the work now. So how does, how would that work? How would we change funding? How would we redirect?
Can be adjusted, of course.
Yeah.
I think if we can carry that question over into the future, I mean, a lot of it too, you're going to be responding to the request of the superintendent regards to differing staffing needs, allocation needs.
Yeah.
Those sorts of.
Yeah, so it's just reflected, yeah, in future.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, and just so you know, so, you know, I'm not here to say, okay, we're gonna create a new action plan, here's what we're gonna do in the district. Not at all. And right now, there's, there's a lot of good work going on with this district and Brian's been a leader with the department, I believe with lots of different organizations and making changes of substance. He's worked, one of my colleagues, I think she spent last weekend, Jenny Hinkle was here, working in some of your, with some of your schools. And so he's been very, very proactive, great partner. And again, he's leading it, we're only in a support role. But, but what we'll talk about in the future, you know, we're gonna meet before, before we all meet again, we'll meet with CD staff, we'll meet with Brian. We'll talk about that work and what, what is the best avenue also to share that work with all of you. And, and your role is to support that work, right? Because it's in line with your ins policy that we said we had, even if it's not policy, and that is get these schools off the accountability clock and get our students.
Can I ask, do we, for our staffing models, do we account for how different schools are performing?
So not performance, our, our staffing model currently, the only variation in it would be besides, would be higher needs.
Yeah.
So there's things like that, but we have not, I don't know if I'm correct or wrong, but we have not, in the actual model, we haven't said like this school's performing poorly. We're not, we're not the one piece we're in right now. There's other things that come with, so there's grant dollars sometimes to those schools. So like Chatfield went through the turnaround network through CDE, which is an additional resource. And then we also have like 60 grand dollars that we think is important to those schools. So we have grant dollars, we spend some title dollar, but yeah, we're assuming that the titles.
Or there's an overlap, yeah.
There is title dollars to, but the general staffing model does not.
Well, that's kind of interesting because we were just talking about looking at, at the mill that Pooter enjoys. Compared to the one we're currently enjoying. And that just, that seems like the, the same conversation is i- if, if the dollars tie to the outcome. Would it maybe be something we want to look at, that some of those under, really underperforming schools? I know Andrea was, just to give you an idea, was at Clifton. And their playground is worse than terrible. And so for those students, what happens in their head when they go to a less than great facility? And even when they go out on the playground, it just kind of, you know what I'm saying? It sort of looks like nobody really maybe cares about them as much. And we know that that's not true and that there are various reasons why different facilities are where they are. But could we improve outcomes by throwing a little love that direction?
Well, you think the whole idea, one of the ideas with the property out there by Rocky, Rocky Mountain was that's a great way to show that community that the county cares, the district cares to uplift them. And we have a lot of schools in our district that need uplifting, which was why the 2017 bond passed. Because we demonstrated a huge need and we need to continue to do that. And like you said, there, there's things beyond our budget if there's, there's, I know, I remember years ago when Clifton was a turnaround school. When I was still a principal of the district, they got millions of extra dollars from the state and federal government to help them. And they, they brought in coaches, not sport coaches, but academic coaches. And it really made a huge difference. And then the district had to pick up some of that later, but, so there are other resources out there. I don't know what they all are. But to, to supplement that, you're right, as a district, we could say, we need to, now they didn't buy playground equipment or things like that. But it's, it's the whole facility also makes a difference. I mean, that's, that's Grand Junction High, Orchard Mesa Middle School. Chapita, right? All those schools are like, let's build a top end school that shows that community their value. And that was a big push for Orchard Mesa because they were kind of, who cares about Orchard Mesa? Kids out there, well, we did and got that passed. And from a lot of people in the valley that, you know, probably didn't know how to get to Orchard Mesa. But it passed because we sent, got a message that all of our kids matter. And we can, to Angela's point is, yeah, if Clifton needs that or schools, we, we need to promote that and try to get those resources.
So some of the support information, or some of the information that I'll provide next time, we'll dig into various, again, various strategies. But again, you want to maintain what coherence you have. So I would be hesitant, you know, this may be something you'd want to pursue at some point. But take it bit by bit and, and kind of move forward and, and recognize what's there. And that's something, if you can't all speak to it, I mean, that's where you can be a, a strong ally for improving academic outcomes. If you can speak to the great work that's already being done, you know, because people want to know what's, what's being done. Doesn't mean you have to know everything, but that's where you could, you could help without making another change, right? Like we all know, there's, you know, there's five of you. Like, again, I bring up Madalak, if you, some of you know Matt Cook. But when I was on the board with him, he's like, you got three, you can do whatever you want in this district and you can make it a big disaster area too, right? Same, on our board, we had seven, you have four, you can do whatever you want, but you can make it a mess. So it's kind of like, well, we'll take it bit by bit and at least be, be good, strong advocates for the work there. And then continually, I mean, we're continually reevaluating, you're asking the right questions. The last thing I have to, and I am, I'm cutting some of this short, again, just for the sake of your time. I don't think it's beneficial after a certain amount of time, but this is still rather high level what I have up here. And I just want to share this with you. Hopefully you had a chance to look at the tool. And then the, the one other piece was kind of looking at some of your data, which was more looking, I wanted you to think about those questions because, and you can go back and revisit it before we meet again. Those questions are related to positive outcomes related to school turnaround. And so they're asking you if you agree or disagree with those particular items, so, and some of that comes back to budgeting and everything else. So that's something to kind of consider a little bit. What I wanted to share tonight is the final sort of item is a rubric that was created by, I'll skip ahead for a second. It's, it's, the one that we're, that I shared with you is a CDE rubric, but it's based on the Center for School Turnaround's work. So this is a, a center funded by the Institute of Education Science, the education department, the feds have. And what it's, what it does or what it did, I don't think, I don't know if it's still actually out there. They just researched school turnaround efforts, what worked, what was effective. This rubric was created by that center. And if you have higher ratings, basically there's correlation between higher performance in all those domains and the outcomes associated with schools. So I just get back again, these are the four areas. So it was initially, the, the actual CST rubric was created for school district administrators, primarily principals. So there's a school level rubric and there's a district level rubric. So again, CDA, CDE has modified them to fit our statewide context. And the district rubric also includes a school board component. So if you looked at it, you saw that. So there's four larger domains, you know, again, more effective systems, have more effective leadership, talent development processes. Some of the stuff you were talking about earlier a little bit, your HR systems, your, you know, how do you retain and recruit high quality staff? Instruction and then culture within schools. So that's sort of what the rubric's based on. There's a four-point rubric associated with it, I think that's right, five. Yeah, it's getting late in my brain, I don't know. But, but the idea here with sharing this rubric, again, is to evaluate your practices from the school board lens and, and get a better idea of how you may or may not be impacting favorably the outcomes in your schools. So if you have that rubric, if you want to just pull it up on your screen, you can take a look. But, let's see here, we got a few snapshots. Sure.
Can I just say from a high level, looking through this, just in conjunction, the leadership change in conjunction with our strategic plan? I mean, we're not like exemplary at all of these things, but we're hitting, you know.
Hi Marx.
Components, well, I don't, yeah, we're like hitting components of most of those things and I was thrilled. I didn't actually fill this out, I just like looked at it. I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, there's, no, you weren't supposed to fill it out. I didn't ask, no, no, no.
I didn't quite know how to use it. Like, was I supposed to fill out all the numbers and add them all up or like?
No, and, and I don't think it's actually designed with that level of specificity, although it could be.
Okay, well.
And depending on if you wanted to use it that way, then it might be something worth considering, like if you wanted a score or something to that effect. Now, if you look at this, so there's the four domains and then there's a series of sub-indicators within each one. The very bottom of each of those sub-indicators is a board support specific piece, right? That's really where we're focused. The other ones are focused on more district operations and administration. So that's more where Brian's team would be focused and looking, right? But that being said, I mean, the board support is leverage for all those actions that's going on right above it. So this is just another screenshot. I think the copy that I sent you, I went ahead and I highlighted the board support on all of them, just to make it stand out so you can kind of see. And then again, it's a four-point rubric from left to right, lowest to highest. There are scores associated. Need to check with my colleagues to see if they've actually done some like scale development or something on it. I'm not sure if they have to present, but. And, and then what you would see, you know, there's an, an additive effect as you go from left to right. And I had a couple of questions and we'll kind of wrap with these questions. I'll, I'll leave the other activity up just so you can, again, you can spend a little time on this and I'll send you some real light homework because I know you don't have time for homework, where you can think about it a little more before we meet again. But if you look at the board support sections, and maybe if you have one page open, just kind of look at it if you remember one page. Can you see what the biggest difference is between the board support and the other presented areas for a given domain? I, I think I already answered this question though. I said kind of what?
It doesn't, so all the other ones are like the, there's a specific thing than action that's happening and the board is just fully support or funding support.
Right.
It's, we're not adminis, there's no administration.
Right. Or the other question I have, if you go from left to right, what's the difference in the rubric typically from the highest to lowest performing on that rubric for board support? I don't know if you can catch it or not. And if you don't have it in front of you, it's not gonna be, you're not, probably not gonna catch it. Can you, can we read it? Is it big enough? I don't know.
Yeah, that was easier.
Just one example.
Yeah.
My eyes are so, I can hardly see this on here. Yeah, and.
Well, you have your occasionally, consistently or proficient.
Right. And there's also reference, and this wasn't the best one maybe, is you go from further right, then the orientation is greater inclusion of policy. So, and again, if it's not policy, then in your work, it would be, again, however you codified these particular things. So as opposed to just kind of, yeah, we're gonna support and we're here, we're gonna develop the goals. But the difference in is, again, is how it's, it's included. So you're going operation, Brian said, and I said it earlier too, the fir, the upper part would be more operational. And then we have more of a policy lens, that's the dividing line for us. And then the tighter the adherence to policy or our goals, that would be a stronger indicator of effectiveness at the board. Which again, it, the clarity of mission and vision and the work expectations for your executive. It makes sense if you think back at, at those governance principles, the, the better aligned those things are, the less likely we are to disrupt the work that's going on in efforts of school turnaround. Or non-essential efforts. But doesn't mean we're not involved. I mean, you were all involved tonight. You asked questions that were, had some operational implications. You weren't directing actions based on that necessarily. And sometimes we have to. By statute, we're required to step outside of policy sometimes, like with board or budget approval. I mean, there's all sorts of weird stuff that it's like, this is not a policy lens. You have no choice. It's required by statute. So, anybody have any questions on that? You know, maybe before we meet again the next time, that's something, just kind of look through it, think about it. But, you know, so we, we did a quick revisit, or quickly revisited governance, kind of where you were at. You made some strides, I'd say. It's good. There's probably a few little areas. I mean, the, the engagement one is always when I was like picking on, I mean, now when I, you know, my recommendation, you might want to look at it. Just touched on the killer bees. I mean, it comes back to that policy focus. We, we shared one tool, which is the rubric. And so again, that's for board actions in a turnaround context. So I would encourage you to go back through it now, you kind of know what it is. And look, just look at that board support domain even loosely, like what are the categories? So how am I supporting leadership or the activities of human resources? Where do we fall? That could be a self-evaluation tool too, in, in, to some degree with some of that work.
Yeah.
And then we didn't, we didn't talk so much about the last one, but that's okay. We'll get there. Considering it was what, maybe an hour and 15 or 10?
Do we have this in a Word document or is it just in PDF?
I can get it in the Word document. I will send, we'll send that. I'll send some board evaluation tools that you can just look at, see if that's something you'd want possibly be interested in. I talked to Angela and Andrea earlier. I'm gonna send them some copies of other board handbooks. I think they're coming up with a plan. Of course, they're gonna share it all back with you. They're starting to engage that. I would say collectively, you also might want to start thinking about the expenditure of those funds. You don't want them sitting around forever. I mean, and, and Brian might have some recommendation too. If there's things that help you better understand turnaround efforts that you could do. I mean, that might be worth it. We have districts, you know, we have one district that wants to convert a school to expeditionary learning model. So their boards are visiting that. It could be, you know, resources, you know, you can buy the books, you can buy, have somebody help with the board handbook development. And it goes way beyond that. I'm just throwing some stuff out there. If you think of things that would be helpful, it's not a ton of money, but if it helps you, you can do it. And that was that, that Follen book, or, wait, is it Follen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good book too. I mean, it's. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Creation, but I know we talked about it, I think it was when we were on the goals, it was, I don't know how this system was updated. So we have our own vision and district mission, but there's board purpose, essential board rules and core dragging values. So that might be like an interesting activity to go through, I think you pointed that in the handbook. If you don't like these, then bottom up.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So what do you really know, those documents that Mr. Jurgus and Sam are all in that Google Drive, that shared Google Drive? Are there full documents and.
If you think of other resources that would be helpful, I mean, I, I've collected so many different things, I'm happy to send them on to you. Community engagement process, I'll throw this out too as a quick one. If there was somebody, if you had somebody that, you know, if you wanted to design a process, that would be something you could do, like, you know, a survey or how you might annually engage the community. If you had somebody that worked with you on something like that, might be an area. I mean, I think you, I think all those funds have been, they're probably sitting in your bank somewhere. Yeah, I think.